All right, I'd like to call this work session a meeting of the county commissioners to order. We do have several things on the agenda for tonight. So, what is the agenda? Commissioner, one thing I'd like to add on here is I talked with Commissioner Holbrooke just a little while ago, but we want to add on just a quick discussion, economic development discussion. We'll put that as number five and we'll work it in, try to work it in before we break today. First item on the agenda for our work session is animal control update. We've asked Dorothy in Santa Ana County Council about animal control, so we'll turn it over to y'all for a few minutes, will that be okay?
Okay, do you understand or is it okay if I say?
You're okay to sit down here at this work session.
All right, I just wanted to thank all the commissioners to begin with because we still tell them what problems and this time we have something good that has happened and you guys can create that. And to show you a comparison, I think you've got a handout. We chose July 2012 through December 2012 to compare to July 2013 to December 2013. And the reason we chose those two time periods is because we hired Jennifer, our adoption rescue person, July 2013. So, we wanted to take those six months and compare it to the six months at the same time last year. So, we were comparing apples to apples. And she's been employed now for six months and it's been almost a complete turnaround as the commissioners know, everybody was getting bombarded with all these horrible emails about the animals and situations that they were living in and us having to euthanize so many. So, just to let you see here, we've got some numbers. The adoption rate in 2012, 6% of all the animals were adopted and in 2013, we had an increase of 8% of all animals being adopted. The next one is a huge one where the rescues. We've had a 38% increase in the number of rescues. In 2012, we had 8% of all animals rescued. In 2013, we had 46% of all animals rescued. And that is a huge jump there, which shows you that our rescue adoption person is really doing a fantastic job. She's got a good rapport with all the animal activists in the county as well as she's well-known in the community. She has a nursing background as well and is familiar with all the diseases that animals carry and can give vaccinations as well, which is a big plus. Moving on to the next item, the total number of animals saved in 2012 was 18% and the total animals saved in 2013 was 59%. So, as you see, that is a huge increase. And if you want to break it down farther, to look at the number of cats, in 2012, there was 3.5% saved to compare to 2013, 37.5% saved. And then for dogs, the number saved in 2012 was 31% and then the total number of dogs saved in 2013 was 80%. So, you can see a huge increase in the number of animals that were saved. If we move on down to euthanasia, there was a 42% decrease in the number of animals that we had to euthanize. In 2012, 79% of all the animals were euthanized. Compared to 2013, only 37% of all the animals were euthanized. And then we break it on down to the animals that were euthanized by carbon monoxide. There was a 28% decrease. In 2012, 64% of all the animals were euthanized by carbon monoxide. In comparison to 2013, only 36% of all the animals were euthanized by carbon monoxide. And then if you look at the euthanasia by injection, in 2012, we had a 36% of all animals were euthanized by injection. And then in 2013, 64% of all the animals were euthanized by injection. So, as you see, we had a goal, a five-year goal, and we surpassed that goal, which was 50%, to have the animal euthanized, 50% with injection rather than carbon monoxide, as a five-year goal, and we surpassed that already.
Dorothy, the reason why I asked you to come over here tonight and present this, because I knew that we were going in the right direction on some of these things. Hearing you say that in the last six months that we've decreased the use of carbon monoxide by 28%, increased the use of lethal injection by 64%, exceeding that goal tremendously, and y'all have done a great job with that. It's very commendable. My question is, with the type of success that we've had reducing the use of gas chamber in a very short period of time, can y'all formulate a plan to eliminate the use of the gas chamber altogether? And we start a countdown from a number of days and months. We'll have the gas chamber removed from here. That would go a long way with working with a lot of these organizations to help build more support for them.
Sure, I may make a comment. I think, okay, I'm for eliminating the gas chamber, but I think if you're putting them at a disadvantage, give it a date because, eliminate it because we do get wild animals and we get different things that the gas chamber needs to be used for to protect our people. When you say that day countdown, we eliminate it, I think like now, you're tying your hand and say, okay, all animals be disposed of otherwise. When you've got wild animals you've got to take care of, when you have aggressive animals that you can't touch, it's more humane to use other methods than to tie them down. Now, Sam may think differently, but you know.
That's a point I think. Sam, you got any ideas on that or is there a way of doing this?
Well, a lot of things has happened in six months. I mean, thank God we have reversed the number of animals were euthanized by carbon monoxide and lethal injection and just took overall the number of animals we're having to euthanize. The staff has really changed. It's amazing how one individual as humane and caring as they all are has changed their ideas about how they want to keep conducting euthanasia, whether we do carbon monoxide or whether we do gas. One thing that we received about eight months ago was from the wildlife commissioner, the head guy, basically telling animal shelters, quit euthanizing all these wild animals. Just because you're trapping them, why are you euthanizing? It's unnecessary and actually it's illegal. And so, with that said, in talking with Trip on the wild animal policy that we have, when we trap in wild animals, they're not sick. And typically, we're dealing with a public health issue with rabies in skunks, foxes and raccoons. Well, all this stuff is not rabid. We're just having to catch them more. We're catching them more as a public nuisance than we are because they're sick. A sick animal's not going to go in and trap and eat if it has rabies. So, we've recognized that. So, we are going to have to start looking at our policy of maybe catching and releasing it or relocating to fall in line with the memorandum that we got from the head man and the wildlife commission, which you know, we've kind of become friends with those guys. So, we want to stay in line with their policy. So, that is still an issue, Johnny, and looking at some other ways of, how can you do it other than carbon monoxide? There is methods out there. And so, we're kind of like, we're looking at this kind of anyway before Commissioner Falls asks that because like, because my staff is getting to the point, it is like, we don't like using a chamber. So, it's like, uh-oh. So, you know, we will converse with the staff and work with Dorothy and I think it's time, since we've moved forward, it's time for us to look at all the different policies and procedures on how we do things within the shelter itself. Whether it's euthanasia, whether it's adoption, whether it's spay neutering, you're on the task force and then hopefully we can bring something in a positive direction to get animals reduced out in the field instead of us having to deal with them. So, I think it's time for us to evaluate the whole system.
True, and I guess that was my comment. My comment was, you know, rather than pin you down and say, okay, you did a six-month study, come back to us and give us a recommendation, what we can do.
And that's really what I'm asking for. What I'm asking is, if you can see a way of eliminating the gas chamber from animal shelter, I think it would go a long way toward promoting a lot of support from a lot of these other organizations, which probably would make your jobs, in my opinion, from seeing both sides and we've, I think the support's always been a big supporter of animal shelter. But I think it would go a long way toward making your job easier.
Well, Jason, I think we already see the gains that they've made just within six months of what we asked them to do in five years. And tonight, to present that to them and ask them, I think is unrealistic because I think that they've already jumped way ahead of the ballgame and I think in six months, if they've been asking them, they'll be presenting that to us of what they want to do. So, I think we need to give them some breathing room. They have, they just, with bringing Jennifer on, they have made leaps and bounds over the animal shelter of what they're doing, as you can see. And I think we're going to continue to see that and that's in everybody's mind of what they want to do, the changes over there, and I think we'll continue to see that. So, it's not out of anybody's mind of what you're asking of them and I think that's right at the forefront and I think you'll see it from them. And I don't think, I don't think you have to ask them for a date, I think they'll come and give it to you.
Yeah, but I think Commissioner Falls' questions weren't acceptable to us as a staff now, seeing how we've done this. And then we have the staff that we have, and why I got staff coming to me saying, hey, we don't like this gas chamber. So, it's going to be received very well to try to come up with some type of a plan to be able to eliminate the gas chamber. But we can handle that now. Six months ago, I told you, no, there's no way because we were putting down 79% of everything that walked in that door. Now, we're not. So, that's eased up on us as a staff as far as the time and the, basically, the mental effect that it has on my staff, euthanizing something in their own arms. So, I think it's more acceptable now and we definitely will look at all the different programs, Commissioner Falls, and come back with you recommendations as we put together the animal control budget, working with Dorothy and Jeff, saying, hey, you know, if we would eliminate a chamber, well, we're going to need something to replace that machine instead of the reverse. Normally, machines are replacing people. Now, we may be reversing that and asking for some additional help to make this a reality. So, we will definitely look at all these programs within the shelter during this budget cycle.
And the request that I make is not any disrespect to what the health department or the animal shelters have done. Y'all have done a tremendous job and, you know, a year ago, I wouldn't have even thought this was even something I would be talking about now. You know, we've talked in the past about, you know, some of my concerns and some of your concerns as well. I think with the numbers y'all are showing, you know, this goes into some of the goals that we've got later on that the county has set forth or the commissioners set forth.
Well, we are in the minority of having the gas chamber. We're like 11, there's 11 counties left, so it's moving toward that way and if we'd like to or not, but now that we see that it's possible, that it could probably happen, I think, you know, eventually that it will. And I do plan to go back to talk with the staff and get their support and I think that it could probably happen.
You know, something that's making us doable more today than it was yesterday is because you guys gave us a position to make this happen. And so, you know, we were being pressured eight, 10 months ago, stop the chamber, stop the chamber. Well, they needed to give us an opportunity to react to what we're doing with. And by, you know, we came to you guys and say, hey, you give me a position, we'll see how this thing will roll with trying to eliminate so many animals being euthanized. And we've proved that we can do that. And so, I would say within the next six months, we could probably show that again. So, you've already given me the first part of the equation to eliminate it and now, during the budget cycle, I will probably be asking for another part of the equation to be able to eliminate this chamber.
I know it's possible part of it is 59% of the animals that have been saved in the community too.
Well, one thing like Sam talked about, the puzzle, the puzzle is eliminating unwanted animals in the county. I know I talked to Sam, you know, with contemplating dogs, the cat part of town, it's becoming a problem bigger sometimes than the dog itself. So, in doing, eliminating unwanted animals, we're looking at spayed neutering. And if it is spayed neutering, it's going to cost money. So, that's what I think Sam blew to with over the next six months or so, that he's going to come back for a budget and if we want to complete this task, if you have, then we're going to have to be willing to step forward and more personnel and more money to do the programs if you want it to happen.
But in order, the heartaches or hardship that we get from folks out in the community, in more the humane community and not just the community in general, is the carbon monoxide chamber, number one. And then number two was the opening hours. So, you know, we talked to Dorothy, we want to look at the number of hours, how we can extend that and possibly asking for your help to support that. And then the other one was to eliminate the drop box that's out in front of the shelter. I mean, we catch it all the time. Why do you do that? Why are you doing that? And so, we hear them, but it's like, give us time to react. And then the fourth thing would be, and we talked in the task force in length about starting a program where the animals can come to the shelter, we're talking about pets, the people and transport them to Charlotte, have them spayed or neutered and then bring them back. That's something that we're going to try to put in this budget year cycle as well, possibly using staff and possibly using volunteers. So, we've kind of got a, we're kind of going in the right direction. And the duty of it too, with me specifically, me and my staff, it's at our pace and it's at our will and we're not being pressured. So, I appreciate the request of asking us to do that because we are thinking about it.
Do you, out in the community, do you sense that as people as a whole are more in the mindset of controlling animals or do you sense as many rampant animals running on the loose or you get a feel for that at all? I know it's hard to measure, but just.
Well, we've got, you know, within the municipalities, in the more populated areas, you get more complaints about animals being nuisance and what have you. But out in the county in general, not a tremendous amount of anything that would even come close to saying, you know, you've got to keep your animal on your property at all times. We're not nowhere near that out in the county and unincorporated areas. And then some of the municipalities, they contract with us, four municipalities to enforce a leash law, which eliminates a lot of that without in the county. We have an ordinance in place now, which you guys passed years ago, that takes care of those on a per case, animal per case basis. So, if your animal's creating a problem, we can control your dog by the ordinance that we have today.
Any other questions or comments? Thank y'all.
Well, we're not, we're looking at this other little joker down here that says something about improvement.
Yeah, so we thought we'd just cover it all.
You need to introduce your question for that.
Here, you like.
This is Trip. He is in charge of the animal control area shelter.
So, we see him back there.
Santa Ana.
Yeah, Trip, he's our animal control supervisor and always tell us a story about, he was with the health department as a registered satirian under the environmental health department. Well, when things got tight, he got to come and work for us. And so, from a very short period of time, he went from being an officer to being over the program. So, he has a lot of talent and he is the future of your animal control program.
And then we have Jennifer Colson, she's our animal rescue adoption person. She's doing great, she's doing, but I can't say enough great things about what Jennifer is though.
Yeah, there's a difference in people liking animals and loving animals. And then there's a person you have that has passion. You know, and the word passion to me now with people who loves animals has changed because she truly has a passion, just like all you guys have and Commissioner Hawkins as well, that have a passion to care for animals and we're lucky that we found her.
Well, Jennifer is a guru on Facebook too. She does a good job raising word about not only the best of their up for adoption, but after they're, after they're an adoptive, I saw one today just about before it came up here, of a family, so thank you, it's good to have you every time.
Yeah, as I mentioned, Jennifer is a registered nurse and she started out at the health department in the school health program, working as a nurse. And then she's decided to have a child and stay out. So, we'd like to get her back in any capacity we can get her back here, but she's proven very, very valuable to us in many ways. Anyway, okay, I'm going to move on to some areas where we're actively looking at making the shelter better and trying to improve the program. And one of these is to coordinate a spay neuter transport program with the Humane Society of Charlotte, provide extended hours of operation at the animal shelter and upgrade animal control software. In order to grow and provide quality care and services, we propose the following capital improvements to the animal shelter for your consideration. In order to upgrade and maintain this aging facility, we believe these improvements should be implemented over the next three years. And as always, we do appreciate your continued support and commitment. Some of the capital improvements, I think you do have a hand at on that. We're looking at between, in 2014 to 2015, put new flooring down to be in compliance with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. Install 64 new gates on the kennels within the animal shelter. The wall reconstruction to fill in hollow areas to prevent disease growth or any animal excreting that could get into those areas that are not sealed off. And then we move on to 2015, 16, repaint all the walls inside the animal shelter, replace the ceiling to a product that's a vinyl type material to modernize, improve the appearance and to easily clean the facility. And then lighting, replace all the lights fixtures in the animal shelter with waterproof fluorescent lights. And then we move on to 2016 and 17 and we're looking maybe to add additional office space to provide adequate room for our continued growth with the staff, public contact and program management. Those are some of the things that we will be looking for, filled with.
It's more of a renovation plan for the future because in the past two or three years, you got to get a tremendous amount of money to add on to the shelter salary boards and make a tremendous amount of changes to meet the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and regulations when it comes to standards. So, we've met those, but we're still dealing with, like you're dealing with all your buildings, we're dealing with aging buildings. And so, we definitely need to start taking care of it. And so, we're trying to put this over a three-year period and try to run it all in together and hopefully, working with Jeff on the budget to try to get some additional capital monies to do these improvements over a three-year period.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much. Any questions, Chairman Dorothy?
We already on the page to do that, and the North Carolina senator says he don't, the puppy mill bill is dead before they can get there.
Who's saying that?
Some senators, the finance committee says that they're going to be, the puppy mill bill.
Yeah.
And it's dead on route. And I'm going to put my own little campaign to whatever I need to do. We put him in a cage and let him sleep on his belt.
And you're going to send an email?
Never touched the ground.
Yeah, we've seen on the news where the governor did say that one of his goals for this year was to have that pass. And so, our department, we would support him 100%. We would just like to know who's going to do the enforcement.
Did you?
No, I haven't said that.
Senator Inger, the bomb?
Well, he's one of many opinions.
I'd first like to say, you know, I appreciate all of y'all. I know that they've been on the task force and some of the same, but that's why I didn't want to pin him down to a date because I knew that he was protecting his daddy, you know, and like we talked about some of these emails we're getting, I haven't saw one from North Carolina yet, but from all over the world we get them. It's a chain letter we get, the people get started. We did have a lady that then was the plant, first thing she wanted to get rid of the gas chamber and tried to explain to it, moving in that direction, you know, and appreciate all y'all done.
Thank you, we appreciate you too. We couldn't have done it without you.
Have done a great job.
Send this guy their email, they get email or email this.
Yep. All right, we'll get Jennifer on that. Hey, she did a good job of helping us out the last time before we get emails. She did a good job. She did a super job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, I may say this beforehand, and I'm sure y'all realize this, but we want to be mindful of everybody's time tonight, the weather outside, we want to make sure everybody gets home safely. So, we're going to go through this kind of quick at the end. Next item on the agenda is our county manager, primary budget discussion for fiscal and corporate team. And I'll talk to the county manager about this. This is, we're asking our county manager to make some assumptions and the discussion can be a lot different when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, so they have to, they have to adjust the things, but.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tier, thank you and I think you did a nice job of teaming this up and getting us ready. I think that what I'm trying to do at this point is to give you a bit of a starting point or a framework for your discussion later this evening where you're going to be looking at your goals and objectives. You received some updates on staff effort, resource allocation, any progress that we've made and you're going to be working through a goal discussion with priorities setting. And I think it's helpful, if I can, to give you a little bit of a backdrop with the help of, I've had three staff heavily involved in this, Chris Kreps, our finance director, Chris Green, our tax assessor, and Al Simony, our human resources director. And I certainly appreciate them being here this afternoon. We want to try to answer any questions that you may have, as well as support staff in the manager's office. If you look right here at fiscal sustainability focus area, examine efforts to grow tax base through economic development incentive program. And then I think it's also listed over, under economic development, grow county's tax base strategically to increase jobs locally. With Chris's help, we went back and looked at the past three years of tax base growth, assessed value, and what we're seeing is we're seeing some nice growth, especially when you compare that and recognize that we've got a state and national economy that's continuing to climb out of a recession. You're seeing the economic development partnership that you folks have put together over a number of years, hard work, key collaborative relationships, industrial recruitment, and your effort is working. I would suggest that this aggregate growth with assessed value is working to strategically increase your tax base. You'll see that in 2013, that you're at 5.67 with asterisk and that is a projected growth number. At this point, Chris Green would continue to evaluate that halfway through the year and we're hoping that that trend will continue. The one thing that I would say about that growth is that this growth does not equate into revenue growth at that level because this does not take into account your economic development incentive grant agreements where as industries follow through and do what is expected with these incentive agreements, we grant back a portion of the tax base for some period of time. This aggregate growth that you see here is gross, not net, and so the net growth is less than that. But over time, commissioners, as you know, these incentive agreements play out, the grant rebates or payback, and then the full value of the tax base growth goes on the tax roll and over time, this has a payback to the county. So, I just brought that to your attention because I think it's discussed in fiscal sustainability... So I just brought that to your attention because I think it's discussed in fiscal sustainability and in economic development. In 2013, last year, when Mr. Dear worked with you to build your budget and Mr. Krebs, and you put the balance budget on the table, you were looking at approximately $2.8 million in new revenue from the general fund. As we, in January, make early revenue projections, we're looking at approximately $2.3 million in new revenue, looking at conservative revenue estimates. Regarding fund balance, unrestricted fund balance, in 2012, you had a 14.1% fund balance. In 2013, I'm pleased to report that through conservative management and an emphasis on growing fund balance, during closeout, you were at 15.6%. I would remind the commissioners that policy guidance is to move unrestricted fund balance into that 18 to 20% mark, and I'm very supportive of that, I want to see us do that over time. And as we go into this budget process, Chris Krebs and I have discussed that as we move, again, looking at a $2.3 million revenue, new money coming in the general fund, and wanting to move into the 18 to 20%, what I would suggest is that we take $600,000 right out of game, and earmark that money to fund balance, reducing the reliance on fund balance as a balancing strategy. Over the past year, you'll remember, you allocated $2.1 million of fund balance, balance last year's budget. If we take $600,000 as we go into this budget process, earmark that off the top, that would take that reliance down to approximately $1.7 million. And where I would like to see us go over the next several years is I'd like to get that under $1 million. I'd like for us to go into our budget process each year with a fund balance appropriation of less than $1 million. With the size of our budget, once we get it down to under $1 million, somewhere between $500 and $1 million, I think you're going to need to see flexibility at that level to where I don't see it as an issue. That, that coupled with a fund balance somewhere in that 18 to 20% mark, which is what you previously asked for, I think is a good, sound fiscal management practice. And if we're ever going to get there, I'll be very excited. Now, what's challenging about that is that if we do that right out of the gate, if our revenue estimates hold true over the next several months, we're looking at starting a budget process with about $1.7 million of new operating money, okay? And so for tonight, several things that I'd give you to think about, and that may be almost too small for you to see, is that if we start the process with about 1.7 in new money, right out of the gate, Allison, Chris Krebs and I have been looking at our healthcare fund and the size of our healthcare fund to be able to continue to provide health and dental to our employees. If we look over the last 12 months, medical inflation is about 8%. So if we roll our healthcare fund over next year, we're fortunate enough to take our current healthcare model, roll it over next year with an 8% inflation number, we're going to need to earmark about $500,000 of new money and move that over toward the healthcare fund. That's a good year. With the size of our healthcare fund, if we're able to continue to provide it and roll it over with an 800, I mean with a $500,000 expenditure, again, inflation in the medical area is about 8%, that's what our experts are telling us. I tell us that we need to just earmark that and set tight. Regarding employee pay increase consideration, I've had discussions with several commissioners, and you continue to be concerned about our ability to pay our employees a competitive wage, that we keep up with inflation, and that we provide a competitive wage to our employees, 1%, if we were to earmark 1% for next year, that's $360,000 of new money. And so at this point, I'm not recommending anything or suggesting anything, I'm just putting out for your consideration, that if we're able to do something across the board next year for employees, to keep pace to some degree with inflation, general inflation, it's going to be $360,000 of new money, and I'm just putting that out as a placeholder right now for us to consider as we move forward. Other things that are unknowns, departments received budget papers and instructions from Chris's department around January the 10th. Budget documents are due back to the Finance Department March the 10th. So departments are working on budgets as we speak, and they're probably going to continue to work on those for another six weeks, go back and forth on technical adjustments, but really, it's just too early to determine what departments are going to need, what, what increases they will have experienced that are outside of their control, new position requests, and so forth. Finally, I've put a $483,000 placeholder in for social services programming. If you'll recall, last year in mid-February, we heard from the state that increases at the social services level last year was almost a half million dollars, that's the fiscal year 13 increase. Karen Ellison, her team will hear something in about three weeks, and, you know, I'm hopeful that it would be less than that. But the point in sharing this with you tonight is that, again, I've walked you through how I've, how Chris and I have got to an estimate of a potential 1.7 in general fund new revenue. I believe that the $500,000 for medical inflation, we can go ahead and, and plan for that. There may be additional adjustments that need to be made on the employer's side, depending on how that fund continues to perform toward the end of the year. I've talked to you a little bit about the cost for base pay increases across the board. Too early to tell what department needs may be, and then I flagged what I think is a big item that's totally out of our control for the most part.
To be clear to you on this, on this slide, you're not recommending a 1% employee pay rate increase?
No.
That's just to say that 1% increase equals $360,000.
You're exactly correct.
So if we look at 2%, you multiply it.
You're exactly correct, and I appreciate you repeating that out loud because I don't want to be misunderstood, that there are no recommendations here tonight. This is just meant to give you the general framework as we move forward, to give you a feel for what we're looking at with the resources that we've got. I'm almost finished.
One question.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Good. You got for department operations, expenses, and so forth, what directions have you gave the departments? You know, for example, hold your own, the more, cut. What justifies you employees?
Exactly.
What, what directions have been given to the department heads?
Department heads have not seen what you have seen this afternoon. I intend, well, for...
Well, you said that you're working on it, so you should have gave them some instructions for something, go.
Exactly, yes, sir. Chris Krebs and his staff sent the budget work papers out January the 10th, and it would be similar to in the past in sending them out. In terms of giving them the backdrop, though, that was about two weeks ago, and giving them the backdrop that you've seen this evening, this is information that we have worked probably just in the last seven to 10 days. I'll share this with department heads tomorrow, and then we'll be talking about it.
I guess my question is the fact, when we started approaching the budget, one year we said, okay, we want to cut 2%, or we want to hold employees for their ad, unless it's really justified. So that's why I'm asking, if you talked to the department heads and gave them any instruction, you just said, okay, we're going to give you the information, bring us back the budget.
I've not given department heads targets, I've not told department heads aggregately to come back with 2% or no additional positions. What I've told department heads, and I met with them in January, was any big ticket, anything that would be significant in this year versus last year, that I'd like to meet with them and talk to them about that individually. I think that when we take this and pass this to department heads, it's going to give them the framework that they need to understand about how much money aggregately that we've got to work with across the county. And I, I don't know really what to expect from them at this time, I may see some...
I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing is there aren't going to be any...
What you're asking is are they looking for any way possible to cut?
Yes, yes.
That's what we would be asking.
Can we do better than that? I'm saying that we can, but that's a question I'd like to need to ask.
I think it's, I think it's a great direction. One thing to add to the conversation, I think it's a good point, Mr. Hutchins, is this is, we're way in advance of where we normally are. The reason for us to look at, and my, I think, the reason why we wanted this brought forward was really to lead us into discussion on our goals. So we, we have a snapshot where we're at now, the information that we know, so that whenever we're looking at these goals, if there's something, it's a big ticket item, and we see this, that we're going to be in a non-position to do a big ticket item, that might affect where we want to focus our goals on. But I totally agree with what you said.
Yeah, but even if it's a big ticket area, the department is already working on something, and we're going to say, okay, you know, we've got to do less or more, then are they wasting their time rather than give them instructions after we look?
I think that what the board can be assured of this evening is that I will work, as was Chris, we will work diligently with departments between now and March, when they submit their final paperwork, to determine that they have exhausted opportunities to save money, if there's opportunities to look for combining services, redesigning programs, not filling positions or collapsing positions, re-engineering work processes to save money, to do more with less, we will exhaust that process between now and March. And I think that, that the message that we send there will be consistent and aligned well with what we see as being modest growth, but a continuing challenge of paying for things that are getting more expensive, and then, you know, not having, not having money that we need maybe to address some things that departments want, needs versus wants. And so I don't want to belabor that, but I want to assure you that we'll spend a lot of time on departments on that.
I think if I'm an department head, once you show me those figures, then I'm going to, I'm going to form some pretty definitive conclusions. One is, if I'm expecting to increase some requests, I'm also going to have to find some cuts to offset that.
Good point.
Because really, basically, you look at that, you're saying to departmental heads, basically, this budget is almost zero increase, is flat. So if you come in asking for an increase in your budget, there's not money there based on this initial proposal that you're giving to us. So maybe this will help, what Mr. Hutchins is saying, that it'll help them form some opinions as to what they got to face as they look at those figures, because that's, that's not what I would have hoped to see, but I guess that's reality right now anyway.
The, let's see, I wanted to take a second because several commissioners have talked about the fact that the pay plan has been frozen for some period of time. And what I, what I wanted to share with the board tonight is that the graph, the graph that April put together for me really outlines, out of about 760 staff, we've got over 50% that are at step one or two of the pay plan. We've got nine steps in the pay plan, the pay plan is frozen. And as we examine where employees fall on the pay plan, it's important to note that 2/3 of the workforce is between steps one and four. So in theory, if we were to turn the pay plan back on, and it's in theory, to ask ourselves the cost of reinstating the pay plan as it's currently designed, as you can see, in its current design, steps one and two represent a 4.8% increase, steps three and four a 2.4. A third of the workforce is between step five and nine, and that's, that, that does not go with it automatic step increases. But if we were reinstating the pay plan as it's designed today, you would be looking at approximately $1.7 million to reinstate automatic step increases. And so it's, this is good analysis from Allison and her team in human resources. It tells us several things about the age of our workforce, about where they are on the pay plan. I would argue that we continue to need to watch for retention issues, because typically, the closer people are to the front of the range, the more apt we are to lose them and the earlier they are in their career. And so you have, have a higher turnover rate, and we continue to monitor that. It's just a fact of where we are after several years of having the pay plan frozen due to our inability to afford it. What I would ask for moving forward for tonight, this is early in the process, but I would ask the commissioners to allow the staff to continue to examine our current healthcare fund design. Allison and I have been in meetings over the last week with all of our key partners, and we're continuing to examine the cost containment strategies, both in the short term and the long term. Short term would be changes that we would consider in upcoming budget process, long term would be a year out. And I want to have the ability to continue to monitor that. I think that was one of the concerns when I was brought on the board back in September, is that you explained to me that you'd like to see us take a look at our healthcare fund and examine the cost containment strategies. We're well on our way, and I'd like your support for us to continue to do that. I'd like also, and I emphasize this is long term, and that's probably a year, let's take a look at pay plan design alternatives. Let Allison, her staff, folks, maybe we need some outside expert assistance, look at our existing pay plan. I would argue that looking at where we are today, this is probably not affordable in its current design to bring back online anytime soon. And so maybe over next year, what we do is come back to the board next year at this time and look at some alternatives. What are some alternatives that we can consider with pay plan changes that give us a little better forecast for what we're trying to do with our workforce and our pay strategies?
Question, question on that. I've talked to you about the board, I like the hash depth of 2.4 something per step. Could we keep in mind, looking, say, okay, if this coming year's budget can produce some extra dollars, and maybe looking to see, instead of a 2.4 step increase, go a 1.2 step increase, something to that effect, if, if any money comes available, it may be modified, not going through the, the whole step, but do a modified step if, if money's available, because unlike you, you know, with a number of people we checked on, yes, a good while back, that you go down there and you're going to do two of them.
I don't think, I don't think government and pay is any different than private and corporate America. Private and corporate America, I had to reexamine pay plans and look at alternatives. I don't know how long our pay plan has been in effect, but I think you probably make a good point. If private and corporate America are having to examine, you know, these things, maybe it's time for us to reexamine our play, our pay scale and pay plan also. I think it's a good idea to look at.
Well, I think the point's right, right from the bull's eye, and the most critical element of a pay plan is that it's affordable. It's the most critical element of it. And I think Allison and her team over next year can, can take a look, benchmark and see what's going on in other areas and look at alternatives. And keep you up to date as to what we're looking at, keep our workforce up to date, so that we know that we're trying to look at what's affordable and effective a year out.
And I think, follow up on what Mr. Hutchins was saying too, I, I think it, you, it has a gigantic impact upon employee morale. If employee morale sees that they're going to be fixed because we're basically frozen, if they're going to be fixed in one to four for 15 years without moving, then all of a sudden, they start saying, well, maybe I need to start pursuing... a sudden, they start saying, well, maybe I need to start pursuing other opportunities. You know, I'm frozen at a level, I can never get above four unless it's 12 or 15 years from now. So I think it, it's sort of a morale thing, and also points out, I think, pretty vividly in your slide, you know, where most of them lie right now.
Absolutely. Finally, the third check, and I'm going to try and cut, cut comment off. I appreciate the direction, and I certainly appreciate the support. The third check would be, and I think it ties with Commissioner Hutchins' comments, and that would be to explore affordable ways to reward employees short term. Between now and the July 1 budget implementation is for Allison, the staff and I to continue to look at, you know, we have some affordable ways strategically that we can help our employees with employee pay and bring back your consideration with the budget. Last thing on policy guidance, and this is moving to the capital side. I've looked at our capital budget, and really the only thing tonight, before I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, is the law enforcement center court services expansion project. I mean, it is part of our CIP. I'm prepared to move forward and negotiate with the school system on patent drive property as a strategic purchase to tie back to our goal of prolonging the life of our law enforcement center courthouse. I think that the patent drive property represents about 10,000 square feet of office space with very minor upfits, if any, we can bring that online, and we can do that in a strategic way and look at all of the court services that are tied into a law enforcement center. And our goal is to expand the space inside the law enforcement center in order to prolong the life of it. And so, what I'm asking for tonight, and it is in the budget, but for me to be able to move forward, would be, I've got a placeholder for that property at $500,000, and then I've got a placeholder of $250,000 for necessary renovation. We're exploring what moves make the most sense from a cost efficiency standpoint, and certainly, this would not be the last time the commissioners would hear about this. This would all come back to the commissioners for final review and final approval at the appropriate time. But I'm just asking for your support, if there's support for me to continue in that analysis and to start discussion with schools.
I would encourage you to do that, just specifically looking at the figures. That's what, $50 a square foot, 10,000 square feet? And then to renovate it, and we're going through a building expansion program right now with health department, and we're seeing pretty quickly what the cost of new construction is, far above that. Plus the location of that facility, sort of ties in with our other opening facilities there.
That's what I'm saying. It does, it does have multiple uses, it's a, it's a phenomenal piece of property. It's not just the instructional center, but also the Hunter Spoon Building, which has, we're right now using for some immediate space needs, storage needs. And so, our maintenance department is heavily involved in this analysis, and so, with your permission, I'd continue to move forward on that.
I've actually been looking at it the last, their years, which has not moved in that direction for us, but I'm beginning, but that's where I have to either move forward or do it off paper.
And that's, that's what I was thinking too.
No, I don't think you're, are you asking for, for us to take, you're not asking for us to take action on this tonight? You're just saying that you, you want to continue the discussion.
I'd like to continue, yes, sir. I'd like to, to talk to you publicly about it, which I've been looking at, and if it's appropriate, that I continue, and then at the appropriate time, I'll come back in a more formal way, at, 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 Commissioner Lee, in talking for that, about where we're at with it, what we're looking at, in terms of programming the space and what that does for us. Okay?
Any other discussion on that, Rob?
No, I, I think I'm, I'm like, we've looked at, we've looked at it, and we've got to have it through for all the while for the law enforcement building itself, and this is a cheap way to go. We do have uses for the other buildings and the property going on with the county needs, so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah?
We all agree with that.
Excellent. Ms. Chair, that's, that's everything, and I appreciate your time. Certainly, again, Chris, Chris, and Allison, as well as, as Kerry and April have been instrumental in pulling this information together, not trying to cut the discussion off, and I know you want to do goal setting, and you're going to get an interbreath at some point, and so, I'll turn it back over to you, and Kerry is helping to manage our time, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much for all your input and helping get this lined up. Of course, I always blame the area, so. Commissioners, we have three riders. I think two of them are going to be pretty quick, and then the main meeting, what we're here tonight discusses are goals. If y'all feel comfortable, I think that one of these may just take a couple minutes. Kerry, do you want to weigh them in for a break?
Yeah, I'll work with it.
Okay. Y'all want to just continue on? We originally said we were going to wait until six, but why don't we give us a couple minutes more? I'm trying to reserve the rest of time to go through the answer. If we can skip ahead to item number four, that's your board training class discussion. I just wanted to bring this up as a, as a point, and maybe just have a quick discussion on it, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but just wanted to bring this out. Currently, we ask everyone that's willing to serve on board or committee to attend the training prior to being appointed. Some of those people that we're asking to sit in this class have already served on boards and committees, served in public office, some of the appointments. Some of the appointments we do for a board require training after they get on the board as well, such as LMEs, partners, where she goes through a training process, nursing on advisory board, more extensive process than we have now. And I just wanted to bring it up just for discussion, to see if we could, if, if we'd be willing to look at development policy, so that if someone has either served in an elected capacity before, that they wouldn't be required to go through this board training, or if they have had formal training, and like, I know ethics training is something that a lot of different organizations require now, if they, maybe if they could provide us proof of that training. And also, another idea is, the School of Government offers a module, I looked at it Saturday, it doesn't go in-depth, but it is very high-level board information that talks about counties and what, what role of boards and committees are on counties. That is free, and so I wanted to do that at the end of the night, and to, just, and we could maybe ask for some kind of, something from them, saying that they've been through that training and take on that work. These are people that we trust, because we're putting them on these boards, so if they happen to sign something, say they've done it, I wouldn't think it would be a big issue. But we've not really talked about this too much formally, maybe just in passing on some things, but does anybody have any suggestions or ideas or partner with us, looking at doing something like this?
You suggested maybe a board training class once a year, if everyone would go through that, has a mentor one?
That's, I mean, we could, that's definitely something we could talk about. Right now, we, our current policy is, is that we only don't appoint someone to a board or committee until they've already been through the training. They'd have to serve, they'd have to go through that training before they could be on the list that we get to appoint people to a committee. But again, some of the committees, like the LME, the School of Government, provides training for their committee members or their board members that they have to go through, and they have to go through the ethics training. The MBO, same thing, you have to do that with MBO.
I think in, I think in August, definitely when we formed this thing, we were having problems appointing people, and they never showed up. Somebody just called up here and put their name on the list, and they're like, funny, and they wouldn't show up, so we tried to devise a mechanism, it's okay. At least we got some commitment from them, even though they got other classes with other training, that if we're looking at, they like to say to people that just, just say, hey, yeah, I like to be on it, and next thing you know, you put them on it. I think we've come up with a better, a better quality of selection.
They've got some skin in their game.
Yeah, we've got, I, I probably think that we've got a little better handle on it, because we have been more fortunate in the appointment, because sometimes we've left positions open because we didn't have the people. Yeah, it's whatever, whatever the group wants, I know they're different training, and I'd, I'd be open and looking for them.
There's not just a training board, every board.
No, no.
And I don't think that you won't find that either having a commission training or not having commission training is going to increase the number of participants who are going to jump out there and go build a board or something. The whole idea that John was talking about, if you're not willing to commit to a two-hour class, you're not going to give much commitment to boards you serve on. And then on top of that, what we were concerned about at the time too, was about this area responsibility that they need to go about. They need to know that they can go into a meeting, and that it's not just what the chairman says, they question, and what Ann Short is doing is teaching them to question, especially like financial reports. I won't, I'll go with whatever the board says, I just don't think that you'd be doing yourself justice by changing the way we're willing to go. It's not going to increase the number of people participating, and if they have to take other training, which I, I do a lot of training, if you have to take other training, you simply have to take training for that particular position. But, human, I'll go with whatever the board says.
I think it, it may be, at least, at least requirement to go through the board training after, if they're going to go on a board, not say that they haven't gone through the board training before they go on a board. If someone's not going to go on board training five years before they go on a board, if they decide that they'd like, they have to show the interest to go on a board, if that's that's your one, if someone chooses to go on board and they're accepted to go on board, and then within that year, within the first six months, if they'll take on training classes, would that work? Would that satisfy what you're?
Well, I mean, it's going to do that. Going to do that, why go through the hassle if they've got to go through other training? That's what you're saying.
Well, I mean, you know, with, with the LMEs, I think you have, the LMEs, I think you have to go through, it's either four or six hours training, and you have to sign all kinds of documents and non-disclosure, things like, a lot more in-depth than what we do. But, you know, those, those concerns, I, I, I know we have a good class that we, that we offer here for boards and committees. I came to the last board and committee training. It was, for some of the people that were in a row, it was redundant. We had a, we had a city, a sitting city council person that deals with this stuff on, you know, on a regular basis, attending our class. And, and that may be what we just choose to decide to keep doing, and that, if that is, that's fine. But I've had people come to me and say, why, why do you have me do this whenever I've served in this position, or I've, or I have to go through this other training? Nursing, like I said, nursing on advisory board, after you're appointed, you have to go to Rutherford, and you sit in two hours of training there, and then leave there and come back and do site visits with someone that's training you. And they talk about your responsibility on that, on that committee, so. That's, it's a, it's a logical question for somebody to ask, and I thought it would be a good discussion for us to have. And we don't have to make a decision or anything tonight, we can just say, if we want to ask staff to look at options, other things that we can provide or, and bring it back at a later time, that's, that's what the discussion was on there four times, just talking about. Any other comments on it or concerns? Everyone capable to look at options? All right, thank you. All right, we've only got two other things. We'll, if, if it's okay with everyone, we'll go ahead and break, and we'll come back, and you want to go ahead and do your part, Mary?
Yes, Cam. This, this is just for general information. The county has been notified that we are a finalist for an economic development project. That project is down to three sites, North Carolina, which Cleveland County is the site, South Carolina, Tennessee. I want to really underscore two, two things. One is, you either compete or you lose, in a way you don't know, because we all know and understand. I want to parlay going to commissioners by saying this, number one, that we struggle like all get out to land a hotel, and finally, commissioner said, well, we're going to do something creative and visionary and put that in front of a couple of hotels with a prop dead sunset date, see if we get a response. And all of a sudden, two that we've been working on made decisions. So I think fruit's in the pudding there. I'm saying that to say this, this project has up toward a couple hundred jobs. Project also has the potential of a relocation of a distribution center. The project pay scale, $1,000 above our average pay scale of the county. So it meets a lot of the things we like, root collar, manufacturing, automotive relate, which we've been trying to track that niche. I'm going to go down a separate road just a second. How many of the watch did you use yesterday? Black and Decker wanting to relocate back into Charlotte. I thought that was a pretty neat term, we use the term outsourced so often, they're using the term insourced, because Black and Decker wanting to come back from Mexico to Charlotte for a project not nearly as large as the one I'm calling. Average pay in Charlotte's $45,000, Mecklenburg $45,000 a year. This, which is 10 above our county, this particular project, Black and Decker, and it's in print, so I'm not revealing anything confidentially, average pay was $29,000, $16,000 above it. And it isolated principles that they had set aside in their economic development incentive I thought it was pretty amazing last night, when I'm looking into news and listening to news, and those commissioners that were interviewed and questioned, why would you consider this? And it was, quote, "This is all about jobs. Our people need jobs." That's Mecklenburg County, Charlotte, saying that. So I, I think it really, it really sort of charged me last night when I heard all this, because I had been to an economic development meeting, okay, our local board. And there was a, and I talked to our economic development people, and the number of economic development group projects are reducing in number because of the state reorganization and uncertainty in how they're going to go about economic development. So the prospects are dropping while that uncertainty lies out there. And I didn't, you know as much as I do, how I feel about economic development, but I, I think I would like to urge our board to go on record and say to them, hey, this is a project this county needs bad. I mean, it's multiple hundred jobs potentially. The pay is there, the benefits are there, it's a niche that we've been trying to work to get. You don't need to float the normal incentive package out there. You don't need to float the normal incentive package out there. This is too, this is too attractive for us to do that. Plus, as a board commissioner saying, say to them, if it satisfies you to do so, this thing means a lot to this county. Our charge to you will be, you need to really examine the package very closely, be even more visionary than you have in the past, and see what our chances are. But we know without any question what South Carolina, Tennessee are going to do. We don't know the numbers, but we know they're going to be challenged. So I, I just want our board to, give our economic development people a, 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 a supportive suggestion, change gears on this project, and let's, let's see if we can be a little bit more creative than we normally are, a little bit more visionary than we normally are, because this, this, this thing is, is tailor-made almost for our people. We don't need, we don't need to get out and done in South Carolina or Tennessee on this deal.
Eddie, I think, I think you probably made this statement before, and you probably make it a lot better than I can make it, but the thing I always like to tell people, don't seem like most of them tend to understand that any job that you can rank, whatever amount that is being paid, is a lot, sometimes better than a lot of job people have. And the thing about it is, if you give them that incentive to come, if they choose not to come, you've got nothing in the future. If you do give them incentive, whatever number of years, at least eventually, if they become good corporate citizens in the county, they will begin to pay back. But if you mess around and don't give them that incentive, they need to make, we have not, we've not made anything, and we're not lost, but we will eventually. I just don't think a lot of people understand that, but I just have a big problem with people wanting to, quote, put price tags on jobs when it's better working in the home than taking them. And plus, if you get the benefits and everything.
Well, I know there's been some questioning concern about, from some of you about, well, what's going on in economic development. Well, I'd like to say I can tell you everything, I can't always tell you everything because of confidentiality, but I felt like you needed to know about this.
Just kind of like, I know things we've got as standard packs, we chose to step out of the box, and if the driving force, like you say, is what is tailored to our area, we need to step out of the box and go after it. As far as telling us all the details, the commissioners have decided in the past, we don't need to know the details. We don't need to know the names, we don't need specifics, because jobs and projects have been lost on the county fleets, so that's what we chose several year ago, that that's why you're charged with the job you got, or your development team's got it, county manager's got it, what you informed us that it is a good job. If it be my recommendation that we go after it, I'm like, okay, a hundred percent, nothing, nothing. But if we can land these people jobs, a thousand dollars above average wage, that's going to put them in the $30,000 bracket, is going to put them in benefit, that's better than your job. And like you say, with the setting packs we've got, we go in, and if they become good corporate citizens, that helps our retail, that helps everything else, and I'd say, my suggestion, like, okay, let's do what we need to do if we land it.
Well, I think county manager, I need to, I want to convey that word only to the people who are leading, are this charged.
Any other comments?
I think our economic development group has done a good job of fitting packages, creative packages together, of the value of our community and the, the life in the community college, and the training programs, and the things that they can bring to put into fitting those packages, there's a lot of new businesses and industry.
From what I'm hearing from this discussion is, I think we're all in agreement that we, we want to do everything we can to do to attract quality jobs here, and if it means being aggressive, we need to be aggressive on them. We've got a lot of great employers in our county, not knocking them down, but those are good jobs too. I know what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I totally understand what you're saying.
My grandkids do that for your pleasure.
My first job was Hurricane here in Shelby, so I put that in the man's, it's his. Anyway, there's nothing else on that, if we, we've only got one item left, that's our, that's our goal discussion, so how long do y'all feel comfortable with a break? For, for a cup of soup, an hour and a half?
Seven o'clock, be back in here at seven o'clock.
I don't think that's too long.
You want to say, how about a quarter to you? A quarter to you, is that a good?
Don't make a say anything.
How about ten to you?
Let's see if we, if we have a quarter to you. Okay, and if we, if we can't make your quarter, we'll work on from there. All right, that's thirty.
I had three drinks.
Hey, we're going in check.